Good evening and welcome to the Clay County Commission Forum. My name is Teri Khalil. I'm the president of the Detroit Lakes Area League of Women Voters. And I'd like to thank Katie and the Red River Valley League for inviting me to virtually come over in your direction to do these forums tonight. I love doing candidate forums. I've been doing them for 16 years, and I'm still not tired of them. I view them as fulfilling our primary objective of educating voters, and I know that's what you're all about, so we're going to get right to it. But first, let me tell you about the league. We're 100 years old. We're a membership organization that is both a nonprofit and nonpartisan organization. We focus, as I mentioned, on voter education. We encourage informed and active participation in government, and we also work to influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters does not endorse candidates or political parties. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. Membership in the league is open to everyone, men and women, students as well. You can contact the Red River Valley League for more information. This forum is being video recorded and will be available beginning tomorrow, which is Friday. Our format tonight is this: Each of you candidates will have one and a half minutes for your opening statement, and you'll have a minute at the end for your closing comments. We'll then begin asking questions. You'll have one minute for each of those questions. We'll rotate the order in which we ask the questions, so you're not always going first, you're not always going last. And what I'll do is, when I call on one person, I will then indicate that that person will be followed by the next person. So you'll always know, you won't be surprised. Our timer tonight is Carmen Windicker. Thank you for doing that. Out of consideration for the other candidates and those who will be watching this later, we ask the candidates to please respect these time limits. And candidates, if you would, all mute yourself until it's your turn to speak to reduce background noise. If you don't mute yourselves, unmute yourself, I will try to remind you. With that, let me introduce the candidates for tonight's Clay County Commission Forum. Candidate for District One, first we have Ben Hammer, who is joining us audio-wise, but unable to join us with a video tonight. We also have Jenna Kaylee running for District One. Good evening, Jenna. District Two, Frank Gross is running unopposed. And District Five, David Ebiger is also running unopposed. With that, we are going to begin opening statements. Again, you'll have 90 seconds to begin, and we're going to begin with Frank Gross, who's asked to make a statement. Go ahead, Frank.
Good evening, and thank you to the league for giving me this opportunity to thank the people of Clay County, especially in District Two, who supported me in the past eight years. I've been privileged to make so many new friends, as I've attended the 15 Township and seven small cities meetings in my district, trying to inform them about what has been happening in the county, and asking them what the county can do to help them with their concerns. The County Commission, along with the excellent help of our talent supervisors and energized workers, have made vast improvements in Clay County campus, such as the correctional facilities and the juvenile detention center, where we have provided a facility where we now not only house inmates and juveniles, we now have programs where we are trying to rehabilitate the inmates so that they will not be repeat offenders. We have done a lot in the last eight years, and I want to be part of the next four years where more improvements will be made, as far as our solid waste facility, road and bridge improvements, and other facility improvements on the campus. Again, thank you for your past support, and looking forward to four more years. I will stay around for the rest of the forum if there are any questions of me, and hope this will be a beneficial forum for the candidates involved in an election for their district. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And certainly feel free, if you would like to comment on any of the questions, feel free to wave at me, and I'll definitely call on you.
Very good.
Next, we will go with Ben, who will be followed by Jenna. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the league for setting this up and inviting all of us to join. I appreciate it. I would like to just state to my constituents in District One, which is basically most of the city of Morehead, I would appreciate the ability and the opportunity to speak for you and Clay County. And I want to say that I would like to use my experience with the Planning and Board of Adjustments Commission, and also the Board for Morehead Youth Hockey, to expand upon all of the things that we need to do to improve not only Morehead but Clay County as a whole. And I want to say that I'm excited for this opportunity, and just would appreciate your vote, and that anything that you can say, you can say to me directly. I believe in an open-door policy. I'm always accessible, and I will work very hard to make sure that every, our needs are met and our concerns are dealt with in an appropriate and timely fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was Ben Hammer. Next, we'll hear from Jenna Kaylee, who will be followed by David Ebiger. Go ahead, Jenna.
Hi, yes, my name is Jenna Kaylee. For the past 12 years, I've worked in our public library system, both face-to-face with our neighbors and behind the scenes, working with a variety of agencies and county services. I feel like this has given me a real understanding for some of the strengths of our county, but also some of the issues that we're facing together. I am not a politician. I am a mom. I'm a gardener. I love singing at my church, and I feel like I share a lot of the same concerns as you. I'm concerned about our vulnerable residents and families having access to the services they need to be strong and healthy. I'm worried about affordable housing for families, individuals, and in particular, our seniors. I'm worried about the success of our new American neighbors, the need for foster families, culturally appropriate foster families, homelessness, hunger. And of course, I want great solid waste and recycling services, and the potholes filled, and, you know, the same kind of things that you worry about. I am a lifelong learner, and I don't want to make any wild promises, but I will listen. I will make decisions with compassion, and I will seek out input from community groups that don't always get a say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. David?
Thank you, Teri. I'm Dave Ebiger. I really appreciate the league affording us this opportunity to reach out to our citizens during the challenging times that we face right now because of coronavirus. The door-to-door knocking and meeting with our constituencies is difficult, and this affords us an opportunity to reach out to them. I've served as a police officer for 40 years. The last 12 years was here in Morehead as chief of police. I'm familiar with the community. My district, District Five, is comprised of Ward Three plus precinct 10 over in Ward Four. So, you know, my entire constituency, our citizens of Morehead, and I will represent them. However, I'll serve all of the residents of Clay County. That's what the commission does. I've got a working knowledge of a lot of the needs and the resources and the nuts and bolts of local government here after 12 years of being chief. I've had the opportunity to work with the Clay County Commission on a number of issues, most recent being the Law Enforcement Center and Correctional Facility, along with the sales tax support those efforts. I'm looking forward to working with the citizens of Morehead and Clay County and with this commission for the next four years. Again, even though I'm unopposed, I want to be able to respond to any questions our citizens have. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We'll now begin the direct questions, and you will have one minute to answer each question. And I'm going to go first to Ben, who will be followed by Jenna. Our first question is, what are the most important challenges facing Clay County, and how do you propose to address them? Ben, let me repeat that for you. What are the most important challenges facing Clay County, and how do you propose to address them?
Thank you, Teri. Yeah, so I think probably the first and foremost question and challenge that Clay County has is flood mitigation. Without the FM diversion working towards being completed and all the things that are required to get that project up on its feet and going even more than it is now, to protect the citizens of not only Morehead but Clay County, and ensure that our small-to-midsize and large businesses have the footings they need to continue to do business in our beautiful county, we have to really push that hard and continue to work with not only the state but federal and local governments to make sure that this project is, gets kicked into high gear and gets going so that we have our flood protection. So I think that is the number-one thing. I'd also like to talk about things like affordable housing and things of that nature. That stuff's all important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Jenna, we'll hear from you, followed by David.
I think the number-one issue is the mental health crisis that we have in our community. We see the effects of this in substance abuse, in unstable situations in families, crime, and all of these things have a root cause, and I think that can go back to mental health. We have a lot of great services. The commission has done good work recently in increasing access to those services. I think we need to look at what's been effective, and as a community, really seek to reduce stigma and make it normal to access mental health care, just the same as medical care. Affordable housing is critical as well. I've been seeing way too many senior friends moving out of the area in particular, and when we lose our seniors, we lose our community volunteers, we lose our arts patrons, and that really diminishes the quality of life in our region when we lose those folks.
Thank you, Jenna. David?
Thank you. I think one of the things we've really got to be aware of is we have a revenue issue within the state of Minnesota right now, where a lot of revenue that we traditionally get from the state may not be available over the next several years as a result of coronavirus business loss. We have, we have a real trial put on a lot of our businesses, and even some homeowners are paying their property tax, which is what we sustain our governmental operations on. We need to be fluid, we need to be aware of these, we need to be ready to address financial shortfalls as they come in. There are great issues. I think the mental health and the substance abuse issues in this community need to be addressed. As a law enforcement officer, that was one of our major challenges. That's something that we have through our public health. We have a mandate to address those as well. So there's a lot of challenges facing us in the next several years.
Thank you, David. This next question is going to come right back to you, so you might as well keep your mic open. Speaking of the county's finances, overseeing the budget is obviously a major responsibility of being a commissioner. How would you balance the county residents' needs for services with the tax burden on residents? What should Clay County's spending priorities be? I'll repeat it. Overseeing the budget is a major responsibility. How would you balance the residents' needs for services with the tax burden on those same residents? What should be the spending priorities?
My experience as department director and municipal government, one of the things you, you want to have an elected official that are setting the constraints you have on budget, is that they will listen, and you can present genuine needs for your department, for your operation, and justify them. One of the things, the first things we need to do is make sure our basic services that we provide, the fires get put out, we have deputies respond to crime, you've got a compassionate and a productive correctional facility and juvenile facility. All of those things need to be sustained. There's going to be times in the next few years where we're going to have to make a serious look at what we want and what we need, and it's going to take a mature group of people, and that's what I've seen with the, with the commission, to make those decisions and understand that sometimes people aren't going to be happy when we make them. We have to, have to do the hard work.
Thank you. Ben, I'm coming to you with the same question. How would you balance the needs against the tax burden, and what should the priorities for spending be?
Thanks, Teri. I guess in my opinion, I think that the priorities for funding in Clay County should always be public safety, public health, roads and bridges, social services, things like solid waste, and veteran services. These are all things that are extremely important to the continued growth and prosperity of our county. And I think that it is our duty as a society to uphold those things and make sure that all of those services are sustainable and are attainable for all of our residents. So I think that, that those things are at the forefront of where we should be looking at budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna, go ahead, please.
I think I, I know, I would always ask myself, what do our families and residents really need to be healthy and safe in our community? And I know the other commissioners agree about this as well. Those health and safety, those are two cornerstones. What I love about this commission is it's nonpartisan. We really can just work together to make the best decisions for our neighbors. So I look forward to working together. Yeah, we need our roads cleared in the winter, we need our garbage picked up, we need public health, we need the social services. All those things are critical, but yes, there's going to be some tough decisions, I anticipate. And I will stand up for our families and make sure that the services they need are there when they need them.
Thank you, Jenna. And Jenna, this next question is coming to you first, followed by Ben. We're going to stay with the budget for one more brief question. What area of the county budget, if any, most needs to be increased? What area of the budget needs to be increased in the county budget? Jenna?
Yeah, I think, you know, when you look at the budget, social services and public health are the biggest areas, and I think social services with this next couple of years is really going to be where we're going to need to see increases. With the mental health crisis, like I talked about, when we move our residents into, like, care facilities, that takes a huge chunk of money when we're paying for these treatments, and they're critical, and it is something that we should be taking care of. Some of that's billable to insurance, some of it isn't, but I think social services is where we're going to need to find some more flexibility with them so we can keep our residents safe and healthy.
Thank you, Jenna. Ben?
Yeah, I think the two, there's two areas that I would like to highlight with that, and I think that the budget needs to, to be focused on, and that is, first of all, public safety. I think that we need to focus on things like our fire departments, our sheriff's departments, and our police departments to keep our public safe, to keep our county safe, to increase people's confidence in wanting to move here and know that we have enough infrastructure to take care of all of their needs from a safety perspective. Secondarily, I also think that public health, given the situation that our, not only our state, our county, our state, but our nation, our global community is in with COVID, I think we need to focus a lot on, on public health and, and spend money to make sure that we're taking appropriate action to be safe, to keep our kids going to school, and to just keep our county as good and as great as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Before we move on to the next general area of questions, let me just ask Frank if he would like to add a comment at this point.
The comment I would make to some of these questions that have been asked is, you know, what's important for the county? You know, being involved for the past eight years, it really makes you think, you know, what do we have to do? We have to be, provide a safe county for our people to live in. With COVID-19 around, we have really some big challenges ahead of us, and with Kathy McKay, our, our director there, she's doing a lot for that, you know? But there's so many other things we've got to work on. We've got to work on the bonding bill with our legislators. We've got to get money for our solid waste facility. We've got to work on our roads and bridges. We've got to work on the infrastructure of the county. There are so many different items that need to be worked on to see what's most important. I say right now, the most important one is the safety of our citizens, and I hope that we, that COVID-19 will disappear, and we can operate normally again, and that's really what I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Our next general topic, and he just did the perfect lead-in, is let's talk about COVID a little bit. And David, you'll be first on this question, and Jenna, you will follow him. We're eight months into this pandemic. What policy changes do you recommend be enacted at the legislature to better prepare Clay County for the next economic or public health crisis? And I'll repeat it before we go to David. Eight months into the pandemic, what policy changes do you recommend be enacted by the legislature to better prepare Clay County for the next economic or public health crisis? Go ahead, David.
We have to learn from this experience, and I think our governor's done a reasonably good job, particularly when you look at some of our neighbors, at addressing this. We need to pull the politics out of this. We have an obligation to our public to provide them with options that they can use to stay healthy, and part of that is working on this together. Masks, the ability to mandate them, the ability to do a lockdown when you need it. I understand and sympathize with businesspeople. They've got to keep their businesses up and going. There needs to be some financial backstop for them when they, when they are forced to close down during a pandemic. The public health issue, we need to be ready to respond with vaccines, with treatments, with ventilators, with the things that we saw break down at the state level in this, in this early part of this pandemic, but there's a lot of work to be done, and the state's got to support us in these efforts.
Thank you. Jenna? And Ben, you will follow Jenna. Go ahead, Jenna.
I think there were a lot of hard lessons learned, and one of them was, can't be over-prepared. So now we've seen what this can do. I, I know that there has been some discussions about what kind of materials do we need to keep on hand at state level, also at a county level, so that we can respond to future situations like this quickly and efficiently. I think we now have a better understanding of what our procedures should look like and our lines of communication should look like, so that our pandemic plans are more flushed out in the future. We've connected up a lot of agencies that haven't been talking to each other before, and that's great. So we need to keep those lines of communication open and effective even after this has passed.
Thank you. Ben?
Thanks, Teri. Yeah, I agree. I think that what we've, what has happened here is we've learned a lot, and many of us have never seen anything of this magnitude. So I think that as we move forward in life and in, in our everyday activities, we need to think about how we can improve our response time to something of this magnitude. Rather than waiting for it to continue to grow and become a pandemic, we should be responding faster. I think we need to make a clearer path to resolve by implementing things like having PPE a lot closer at hand, rather than all of a sudden the floodgates open and it's all gone. Things like masks, hand sanitizer, all the things we all need now every day, everything disappeared within weeks. No, I'm not suggesting we stockpile it, but I think we should try to work on a means to have it more available. And we need to focus very heavily on our businesses. That is critical. We need to make sure that they're taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. That's the perfect lead-in for our next question, which is this: The impact on local businesses is well documented. Beyond the current CARES Act grants, what role do you feel the county should play in helping the businesses stay in business and rebuild? And our first person to answer this before I repeat it, Ben, you'll go first this time, and I'll repeat it. The impact on local businesses is well documented. Beyond current CARES Act grants, what role do you think the county should play in helping businesses either rebuild or stay in business? Ben, you'll go first, followed by Jenna.
Thanks, Teri. Yeah, you know, so beyond the CARES Act, I feel like as a county, we could look at different things to aid and help our, our businesses, things like maybe even go so far as look at tax breaks, not necessarily negating taxes, but look at breaks, look at tax abatements for, for different people and for different, different businesses, and just apply a methodology to the way that the county looks at establishing new businesses, different licensures, different grants for land to be able to build and to, to sustain the businesses that we have. It's important, it's very important for us to take care of them as they are taking care of us as a county, and also from services perspective, super important that we maintain the level of service we have for, for our elderly and for other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Jenna? And David, you'll follow Jenna this time.
Having a fantastic infrastructure that we've invested in and we're looking at maintaining proactively in the county really helps our businesses. I also think marketing is really important. If we can work together to spread the news about why the businesses in Clay County are so great, we can get people from the other side of the river to come over here and spend their money at our businesses. I also think we need to invest in new business leaders. We are so lucky to have all of the wonderful colleges and universities that we do in our area, and if we invest in these new business leaders, they will stay here, they will build their businesses here, and they will add to the vibrant, diverse business community that we have in Clay County.
Thank you. Before we go to David, I'll give Frank a heads-up that if he would like to comment on any of the COVID-related questions, you'll have an opportunity right after David. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. You know, you have to remember the position we're in right now is, is a county position. Where we could help businesses is possibly look at property tax abatements or, or at least time to pay it off, but I think that should be tied to businesses that have employees that have, are trying to make payrolls. Obviously, we need to do whatever we can do to facilitate any future federal or state funding like the CARES Act, to make sure our businesses get access to that, lend them assistance in applying, or, or come through with communications that keeps them aware of what opportunities are available. At a county level, we're not quite at the point where we have the fiscal ability to direct funds to sustain businesses. We can certainly encourage our legislators to, to pursue those ends and try and keep our businesses strong through, through a time period.
Okay, thank you, David. Frank, anything you'd like to add at this point?
Well, considering this COVID-19, I mean, it's a serious, a serious thing. And when we look at Clay County, of the 87 counties in the state of Minnesota, Clay County is the fourth fastest-growing county. So we've got to make it safe for the people to come here. So COVID-19 is very important, and, you know, why would people move here? You know, people move to a county because of the schools, because... And, you know, why would people move here? You know, people move to a county because of the schools, because of the medical facilities. And you look at our medical facilities, where are they located at? They're located over across the river. And we have to, that also reflects on our flood protection. I mean, we've got to really get involved. It's, it's one big thing, working all together, you know? It's not just what can we do to COVID-19? There's all kinds of things that interrelate with this. You know, you can't just work and run projects. There's so many projects we have to work together, and hopefully we can work on that.
Thank you very much, Frank. Our next question will go first to Jenna, who will be followed by David. We're switching gears again. And I'll repeat it. Clay County has many residents of lower income with special needs in health, education, childcare, and housing. How can the county integrate planning and services in these areas for lower-income residents? Jenna, before I come to you, I'll repeat it. Clay County has many residents of lower income with special needs in health, education, childcare, and housing. How can the county integrate planning and services in these four areas to help lower-income residents? Jenna, you'll go first, followed by David.
First and foremost, we just have to talk to people. A lot of the groups of people that you mentioned don't get a say at the table necessarily because they don't have the ability to, to reach out as frequently as others might. So I personally am someone who loves people, and I plan to reach out to different people groups to make sure that they're all being heard. If we involve people in the plans from the beginning, then we can make sure that we have systemic equity instead of addressing problems as they come up. If we plan for them right away, people will be able to participate in our services, user services, and have some ownership in them as well.
Thank you, Jenna. David, you'll go next, followed by Ben.
Thank you. My experience in this community has been that we are progressive and we are very sustaining in addressing the needs of people. We can do better. One of the best partners I've, I've seen in working with the police department in addressing the needs you described has been our school system. And continued partnership with that and support of that will, will give a lot of our kids the opportunities that in other communities I've lived in, they didn't get, and that's get a good education, a good start. Obviously, public health and social services are going to have a lot of liaison or a lot of contact with people who are in need. And we need to support those entities. We also need to reach out to the community, and we need affordable housing. The only way to deal with homelessness in our community, which is a major symptom of, of the issues that we're dealing with, is to give housing. You end homelessness by giving people a place to live, and those are things that we can support through our, our county.
Thank you, David. Ben.
Thanks, Terry. Yeah, I, I, I think that we need to take a look at our school, our, the state of, of our schools and give them the resources that they need to succeed, whether that's additional paras, whether that's additional other staff to be able to help and, and address the needs of our kids. I think that we also need to look at our public services and health and make sure that we're adequately staffed and that the staff are at the educational level that they need to be to provide a high level of service to, to our residents that need those services. I think we need to be a little bit more proactive and less reactive. And I mean, we need, so we need to anticipate the problems that, that could possibly be out there and not sit back and go, oh, I'm sorry that this happened, we'll fix it. Let's get, let's get on top of it and, and address it before it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Keep your microphone open, please. This next question is going to you first. Do you support the $2.75 billion Red River diversion project? Why or why not? I'll repeat it, and Ben, you're going first, followed by Jenna. Do you support the Red River diversion project? Why or why not?
Thanks, Terry. I absolutely am in 100% support of our FM diversion project. It is a mandatory issue. We have no way to get around it. We, we need it to support our residents, our neighborhoods, our businesses, our community, and our county as a whole. This, this project has to come to fruition, and we need to see it start work and continue work to tell completion. It's, it's imperative to our community, so we do not have a situation like Grand Forks experienced where it essentially really impaired business and life. People left the community. And, and I want people to feel safe in Clay County. I want people to feel safe in Morehead. And I want them to understand that as a commissioner, I will do everything in my power to make sure that that doesn't happen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Jenna, we'll come to you and then go to David, please.
So I grew up north of West Fargo on the outside of the diversion, in an area that flooded every year. I also had the wonderful privilege of studying local water issues with, with a group project many years ago and really took a look at the diversion, the West Fargo diversion at that time, that it brought the community. So yes, I am in favor of the project, but I also really see some of the negative effects that can happen to those living outside of it. So I would like us to just be very careful and compassionate and be very good communicators with those families that are going to have their properties negatively affected by this project. They need a fair and compassionate deal because some of these families have lived on this land for generations. So we just need to take care of all of our neighbors.
Thank you, Jenna. David, before we go to you, I'll alert Frank that if he'd like to comment on this topic, I'll, I'll come to you after David. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Terry. I am absolute in my support of the diversion. I was chief of police here for about a year and a half in 2009 when the flood hit. And I watched people desperate. I watched our students step up. I watched people load sandbags and stack them up in their backyards and fight to keep their, their homes safe. Since then, I've seen people give up their homes and have them torn down or carried away to different parts of the community. In my district, in District Five, we have a large area that's susceptible to the, the floods. I understand that there are some people who are impacted by this. The litigation at the county or that the diversion authority is currently in is being negotiated right now. And, and I am sure there'll be a reasonable settlement made at some point. But the greater good is served by this diversion, and our community requires it, so I'm 100% behind it.
Thank you, David. Frank, anything you'd like to comment on here?
Well, in this situation, and do we need the diversion? You know, is it too costly? My thought is, how can we afford not to do it? I mean, you've got to look at all the, as I mentioned before in my other statement, our medical facilities are all over, across the river, not all over there. I mean, our hospitals are over there. I mean, we've got to protect them. We've got to be involved in them. We've got all kinds of jobs that are over there in, in Cass County that Clay County residents go to. I mean, we have Cass County residents coming over to Clay County also. I realize that. But there's a lot of people going over there for their jobs. We need to protect the, the FM community. I mean, we, we don't have a choice. We need to do it, you know? And the sooner we get it done, the safer we can have a county for people to live in.
Thank you very much. We are near the end of our time, and I'm going to go to each of you for a closing statement. However, you're not all getting the same question. The question first to the challengers or new people running for office is this. What specific steps have you taken to prepare for the office you're seeking? What specific steps have you taken to prepare for the office you're seeking? How would you, and how would you describe your familiarity with law, the lawmaking, regulation-making process? Jenna, we're going to go first to you, so I'll give you a minute to collect your thoughts. What steps have you taken to be prepared for the office? And how would you describe your familiarity with the lawmaking regulatory process? And Jenna will be followed by Ben. Go ahead, Jenna.
So like I said earlier, I am a librarian and I am a lifelong learner. I love learning about a variety of things. I've been spending a lot of time talking to various people that work for the county. So I've talked to Rhonda Porter, the head of social services. We had a meeting where we went through a big overview of how her departments work and then also asked her a whole bunch of questions. I met with Steve, the county administrator, and talked with him for a long time about some of the nuts and bolts on how things work. Basically, I've been talking to a lot of people around the county to figure out how things operate, to figure out how some of the personalities work together. And I'm really excited to take on this position and work with them. My familiarity with the law process is, yeah, I have got a good grasp of the nuts and bolts. And what I don't know, I will dig into and figure out.
Great. Thank you, Jenna. Ben, what steps have you taken to prepare for the office? And if you could describe your familiarity with the process?
Thanks, Terry. Yeah, I, my, my, my plan on experience and how to handle things is I'm going to draw on my five years of experience with the Clay, or with the Morehead Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustments Committee. So I have been very heavily involved with a lot of the, the doings of, of Morehead. And I'm, I'm impressed with how much I've learned being on that committee. I've chaired that committee. I vice chaired the committee. And also, I was, I'm an elected board member for Morehead Youth Hockey. So I have a lot of families that have entrusted me with the, the well-being of, of their kids and, and the sustainability financially and also with facilities with, with their kids. And I'm going to use all of that experience, and I'm going to take that to the county and make, and make a, a good run of it. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Ben. For the two incumbents, what advice would you give to Jenna and Ben as they seek office for the first time? And Frank, I'm going to come to you first. I'll repeat it. What advice would you give to Jenna and Ben as they seek elected office for the first time? Go ahead, Frank.
Well, first of all, you've got to listen a lot. You've got to listen to your supervisors that are, are there helping you. I mean, they, they have given me so much help in trying to make the decisions on important things. Another thing, you've got to find out what the people want, you know? And I, in my district, I've got 15 townships and seven small cities. I attend their meetings once a year. I try and get out to visit every one of them to learn what they need. And I think that's so important, you know? You've got to find out what the people in Clay County, what do they want, what do they need? And then try and work with the, with the staff at Clay County. And it is a wonderful staff there, and they're going to help us to solve, solve these problems. And I think together, if we work together, we're, we're going to get it done. And Clay County will probably be the number one fastest-growing town, county in Minnesota.
Thank you, Frank. David, what advice do you have?
Well, Terry, if I could, I, I'm a new guy. I'm not an incumbent. I've never held office before.
Then go to the other question if you prefer.
Okay, if you want to reset my time, I'll answer the first question.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no problem.
What specific steps have you taken to prepare for the office being sought? And how would you describe your familiarity with the process?
I decided, my wife and I did in February, after being retired for a little over a year, that we were going to stay in Morehead, and I was going to seek this, this office. It says a lot about two folks from down south when we decide in February that we want to stay in Morehead. We love this community. I've reached out, and I've had great response from members of the, current members of the commission, from Steve Larson, the county administrator, from a lot of the department directors, in telling me what the issues are. I've met with Joel Paulson, the executive director of the diversion, and talked to him about issues on that. And so I've gotten a good view of it. My career has been 40 years long. I've been ex officio member of committees for the Arkansas State Legislature prior to moving here. I've lobbied on behalf of the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association on, on issues that affected law enforcement. I've done a lot, years and years of working with the county. And I'm excited, and I really want to take the skills I've acquired and, and use them for the good of people and our community that I love.
Thank you very much, David. That concludes this evening's forum. I'd first like to thank our candidates. For District One, we have Ben Hammer. Also, District One, Jenna Kaylee. District Two, Frank Rose, who's running unopposed. And District Five, David Ebiger, who also is running unopposed. I'd also like to thank our timer, Carmen, for her work tonight in keeping us all on time. And thank you to the candidates for also being so respectful of the time. For you, the voters, if you're looking for voting information, my recommendation is very simple. MNvotes, MNvotes.org. That is the Secretary of State's website. It's terrific. You can find anything you want to know about voting with one, one stop. Finally, I'd like to remind everyone that Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd, or right now at your county courthouse during normal business hours. And also, you can vote on the Saturday before Election Day, which happens to be Halloween, between 10:00 and 3:00, and on Monday, November 2nd until 5:00 p.m. However, out of respect for the election administrators, I do not recommend that you wait till 5:00 o'clock on Monday night to vote. Let's all give them a break. My final bit of advice for everyone is, let's all be patient on election night and let the results come in and not expect them to be done at 11:00 p.m. or even midnight. Voter turnout is going to be extremely high, so we will all be patient together. With that, I'm Terry Khalil with the League of Women Voters in the Detroit Lakes area. I'd like to thank all the Clay County Commissioners once again for their time and attention and their thoughtful responses. Thank you very much for joining us.